Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March first, 2022 Tingsboro School Committee Meeting. I'd like to remind everybody that these meetings are audio and video recorded. My name is Rebecca Stanton and I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Grace Shambly, Student Representative.
Rob Mullin, School Committee Member.
Good evening. Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flagg, Superintendent.
Julie Quastucci, School Committee.
Jeff Boe, School Committee.
Ryan McMahon.
As an eternal.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
We'll rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with the approval of minutes. I'll seek a motion to approve the February fifteenth, 2022 Policy Subcommittee Meeting Minutes and the February fifteenth, 2022 School Committee Meeting Minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries six zero zero.
Another motion you come for?
Citizen time. Looks like we have no citizens here to discuss.
I'd like to make a motion that we move the eight C, the budget presentation, between items three and four.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries six zero zero. So moving into item eight C, the fiscal twenty through twenty-three finance budget presentation. Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'd like to welcome the Finance Committee here. I don't know if you want to call yourself an order or if you already have.
You just.
You did. Great, thank you. If you want to introduce yourself, that'd be great as well.
Scott Pozerski, Finance Committee.
Ron Schneider, Finance Committee.
Billy Crawford, Finance Committee. Thank you very much for having us this evening.
Thank you for being here. So basically, Madam Chair, if I could, I'd just like to provide a high-level overview of where we are to this point, and then I'm going to give it to Mr. Messina to really get into the numbers. But beginning back in December, as we typically do, we met with our building administrative team and we talked about what our priorities and needs are in the district. I think one of the things that we're certainly seeing loud and clear this year is the social emotional needs of our kids are paramount right now. It's been a very difficult couple of years for our kids. So Joe will talk about some of our staffing shifts that have occurred over the past year as a result of that, but our goal has been to prioritize our kids and make sure that we're doing everything we can to provide them what they need academically as well as socially and emotionally. So that, those conversations begin with our admin team in December, and I think the process again has been consistent, it's been fruitful, and it's all people in one room pulling the rope in the same direction. We don't turn it into fiefdoms where it's the high school versus the middle school, the elementary school. We come together as a team, we understand what our needs are. That being said, we develop initial budget, we have certainly requests that we would like to see. We know that fiscally that may not be possible this year, but we will, as a district, prioritize our greatest needs moving forward. I think a couple telling points that are important to remind the community of is, you know, our full-time equivalency of staff has decreased significantly over the past five or six years. And I think one of the things that we're most proud of is we come in at a two-point-four to two-point-eight percent increase every year, and we try to be as fiscally responsible with our budget every year. I think the school committee's done a great job of doing that and supporting that. So with that being said, that's kind of a high-level process where we are. I will turn it to Mr. Messina to get into the actual numbers. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. Thank you to the Finance Committee for coming tonight. It's always good to present the budget and answer any questions you might have or anybody has as the process developed. So working with the Budget Subcommittee that we formed last year, we basically took our current staffing and brought it forward into the next fiscal year in terms of salary, salaries and wages. That's our biggest number, obviously, that we have to look at. So we budgeted two-hundred-and-forty-two-point-seven people and we're currently staffed at two-hundred-and-forty-seven-point-nine people. So that's actually an increase of five-point-two over what was budgeted, and primarily that is support positions at the lower grades. Seeing them come back from a pandemic, there was a lot of challenges, both with behavior, with education, and with social emotional needs. So we've had to staff the lower grades a little higher than what was planned at this time last year. So looking at the salary budget for next year compared to the salary budget for last year, we're approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars higher than last year's budget figure. Second larger expense for us are out-of-district tuitions for children that are residing in other programs, and these programs vary from a typical school day program right up to a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day program. Fortunate in looking at the current roster, we're approximately four-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand dollars lower than where we were at this time last year, and that's a result of age-outs of the population. We're responsible for the students from age three to age twenty-two. So once they hit age twenty-two, they do age out of the district. So we are in a good place this year with that budget figure going down. And the next largest item for us is transportation. You can see for both regular ed and specialized, we're approximately thirty-thousand dollars higher. I was pleased to see that originally we were talking about our bus bid coming in significantly higher than it did come in, which we're going to speak about later tonight. But we did go out to bid, we only received one bid in the process, but like I did say, it was lower than we anticipated, so we were able to adjust the regular ed number and bring that down a little bit lower. And utilities, with some of the rates we've been able to obtain, we're projecting utilities to run about seven percent lower than what we budgeted last year. After we got through the four largest items of our budget, we looked at the other budget centers within the district, and these are all the other regular expenses that come through the budget centers. You can see that we held most of them even with the exception of technology, which last year we had a couple of one-time enhancements to the firewall and to other equipment. So we were able to reduce the technology budget by some twenty-seven thousand dollars. The last three expense lines are on the cover pages. There are some expenses that don't fall into a budget center, the curriculum and curriculum review cycle, as well as some capital items that we utilize lease money for. Pensions are the pensions from grants and the town hall chargebacks for any tuition programs. So you can see our total expenses budgeted out to some two-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand dollars higher. And then we looked at revenues other than the school committee budget. And Dr. Branko, would you mind just sliding up to the revenue page? That's perfect. So in addition to the school committee budget, we have a number of different revenue lines to review. You can see each of the revenue lines, what they looked like. Grant revenues are projecting about a hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars higher. Tuition revenues, some thirty-thousand dollars higher. And the athletic program in both gate receipts and user fees are actually trending downward for the last two years, so that's going down by about twenty-six thousand dollars. And then for some of the other revenues, we took a little deeper dive at budget subcommittees to review each one of those lines to see what it may do. And Medicaid reimbursements, they have changed what the state reimburses us back for in terms of services. So using a five-year average, that is actually trending lower than last year. School choice is a number that we try to predict where our school choice balance is going to be at the end of this year, and that is projecting about thirty-thousand dollars lower. Circuit breaker, that is money we get back from the state for additional special education costs. That is actually higher by some sixty-thousand dollars. And then there are some town accounts. Sped stabilization at this moment, we haven't reviewed whether or not we're going to need to utilize any of the sped stabilization. Town cares funding, that was actually used, about two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand was used last year for the budget. Care's funding is all expended, so that would come in at zero this year. And the host community agreement funding and the APRA funding are just placeholders there, currently placed at zero, but until we do the final recommendation to the school committee at the next meeting, we would review those and see if there's any possibility to use those for funds. So that shows you the revenue other than the school committee budget is about two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand dollars lower than last year. And Dr. Branko, if you could slide back up to the first page? Thank you. So you can see with those revenues taken out, the rollover balance budget using a Valley Collaborative Credit that they usually give us in most years, we're estimating a seventy-five-thousand-dollar credit. That brought the current school committee budget request to twenty-two-point-two million or slightly two-point-six percent higher than last year's budget. And then as Dr. Flanagan mentioned, we worked with the schools to develop their most critical needs. Dr. Flanagan, do you want to speak to this, or would you like me to?
Sure. As we said, you know, we work with our administrative team to find out what we need moving forward. And certainly you can see on this sheet, we have two-point-four positions that we are absolutely prioritizing for next year. And then we have an additional eight or so positions below that, beginning at the TES literacy coach, that we identify as a need in the district, but recognizing the fiscal nature of the community and where we are, know that we can't get everything we want. So those are just in there as conversation pieces and something that we're going to need at some point over the next five to seven years, and we hope to fill all those positions at some point. But our critical mass right now for next year is adding those two-point-four positions to get our students what they need. You can see that based on the number that we have, that's going to increase our budget right now from two-point-six percent to a three-point-two percent increase for next year. Now, that being said, we also know this is our Flanagan run. We know that we will, like we have in the past, work with the Board of Selectmen, work with the Finance Committee, work with the town administrator to achieve a number that is palatable for this community. But we need to advocate for those two-point-four positions right now, and, you know, as we do every year, we don't just say, "Give us the money." We do a nice job of looking internally and prioritizing positions, and if we can do without a position here to fund a position here, we will, and we've done that. And I think our FTE decline over the past six years shows that we are fiscally responsible in that manner. So right now, our original quest is a three-point-two percent increase that we're presenting to the school committee, and I envision what's happened in the past is you're going to tell us to tighten the belt and come back with a final recommendation on how we can bring that number below three percent at our next meeting, and that's historically what we've done. But those two-point-four positions, EL teacher, the sped professional at the elementary school, and the point-four increase in reading are critical for next year that we need to prioritize. So that's where we are with our initial budget presentation.
Great. So I think we'll hand it over to our guests first to see if you have any questions or any points that you wanted to discuss. Mr. Crawford, you guys can take it away.
Mr. Pozerski, any questions or comments?
I was kind of curious how the solar panel project was going and if that would impact, obviously would impact, maybe get positions or whatever.
So kick your rectums to Messina. Just had this conversation.
So we've actually been able to adjust the utility figure down in terms of what the high school expends for electricity due to the solar panels on this building. Based upon the last town meeting where we were given the ability to reach out to our energy provider in terms of looking at the other buildings in town, the elementary school, which I thought would be a prime solar panel location, was actually rejected due to the age of the roof. They won't put on a project onto a roof that's, you know, twenty-plus years old. Our company suggested we should go right out and get that roof replaced so we could get a solar panel, but I think I did mention that at one of the capital asset meetings that, you know, our company thought we should just run right out and get some, a new roof with some panels at that building. The Lakeview School, due to the HVAC upgrades where the units were placed up on the roof for air conditioning and heat, don't make that roof prime for a current project. There was some talk as to whether or not we could expend some money to move some of the units into different positions on the roof to try to get a productive array out there. But even without those units, what they were talking about in terms of savings was minimal to that roof just because of the surface was altered due to those units being on the roof. And with any luck with the positive vote in May, we'll certainly have that middle school ready to accept solar panels, and we will have solar panels on that building.
Right. So certainly our big hope with the elementary school, we thought for sure that would be a great location, and it is a great location, just the age of the roof just didn't pan out.
And just as an aside to that, the recent conflict in Ukraine and the price, it sounds weird. The conflict in Ukraine and the price of oil is going to be affecting even the price of solar panels. The panels themselves are going to cost more money, which makes it even more difficult.
Yeah, I'd have a follow-on question to the utilities is, have you factored in an inflation amount when you're looking at that utility budget? Because, you know, I know utility costs are going up everywhere.
So we are actually, again, Power Options is our energy consultant that we utilize, and we're actually locked into rates for electricity. We're locked into June of 2024. The next, the June twenty-three to June twenty-four rate is actually going to be lower than what we're currently paying. And for natural gas, we are going to be locked in until November of 2023. And again, the next cycle of the next year is actually, it's going to be a lower price per therm than what we're currently paying. So we've had the ability to go out months ago to lock in those rates. And to your point, Mr. Crawford, the electricity rates that we're, we have for the solar panels on this building, again, set up in such a way that we only pay for electricity for twenty-five years. We didn't pay to have the, we didn't buy the solar panels, we just had them placed. We're actually locked in for those twenty-five years at nine-point-eight cents a kilowatt-hour. So we're fortunate in that regard that this whole mess going on on the other side of the world won't affect us in terms of utility rates.
I had one other question on the transportation budget. You said you only had one bid. Is there any escalator in there? As fuel prices go up, do they have the ability to come back and ask for more money, or is that built into their bid?
It's actually a fixed rate per year for the next three years with two one-year options. So it'll be a fixed rate next year, a fixed rate in year two, fixed rate in year three with no fuel escalator or de-escalator built into the contract.
Okay.
Do the extra positions for all the psychological help or whatever, are those permanent positions or will those age out as people are out of pandemic?
Yeah. So it's a great question. It's hard to say. It really is hard to say. I mean, we're talking, you know, if we produce some widgets, we could kind of figure it out, but the kids' needs are ever-evolving. It's really truly hard to say that. And given the change of dynamics in our community, you know, we talk about the social emotional needs of our kids, but one of these positions we're requesting is for an EL teacher. Our EL population in the past four years has gone from about twenty-five students to just over a hundred now. So as the demographics in our community change, we have to be responsive to the kids' needs. I'm hopeful that, I'm hopeful that we can, you know, not wean off the positions, but reprioritize positions as we think about what we need. Three years from now, we may be all about literacy and math coaches, and may need to say, "We'll reduce a council here to get those positions." I don't know where that's going to go, but I can tell you right now in the immediacy, the social emotional well-being of our kids is absolutely paramount. So I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to, it's hard to say.
If you don't mind, if you look at that reading specialist position, that point four, we have a point six right now at the middle school, we've been struggling for a couple of years to try to bring that person to full-time. And some of the impact we've noticed is that because our kindergartners and our first graders basically missed an entire real year of school, that introductory level, we're seeing a lot more kids reading below grade level. We know that that's going to be a trickle-up impact, and we're seeing it already at the middle school. So right now, that reading specialist is focusing on students with disabilities only. We would like to be able to identify the lowest ten, twelve percent of students who are regular ed students who are still struggling readers. I mean, we're seeing that at a higher grade level than we ever used to before. I would suspect a lot of it is pandemic-related, but I don't know that that goes away just by increasing the teacher for one year as well. It's got, that's some heavy lifting to do. And as Dr. Flanagan said, that English language learner population has really bubbled in Tingsboro, and we, that additional position will really help to meet the needs of those students so that they can move forward in a second language and stay on grade level as quick as possible.
I think about our early learners that came, you know, they had two years of preschool and early childhood learning, and they just didn't have it for these past two years. So they're being thrown into a school as kindergartners, really with no socialization skills and really limited socialization skills. So we are seeing some real significant needs with our earliest learners right now. So it's an issue that we're going to address and prioritize. We're going to prioritize it. We need to.
I would also note, fiscal year twenty, you had two forty-six-point-two. So actually, this year, two forty-seven-point-nine, you're really just getting back to where you were in reality. So you're utilizing those positions in another way. And I think we can all agree, because of the pandemic and COVID, just read the newspaper, you're seeing a lot of bad things happening, you know, with young people, okay? This is social environment and what's going on. So I don't think this is going to be, I don't think your problems are going to go away overnight in that regard, in my opinion.
If I may, Madam Chair. Dr. Flanagan mentioned it earlier, but in the last five, six years, I believe it's twenty-one full-time equivalents that we've reduced our budget. So we don't ask for new employees. In fact, we've eliminated ones that were not needed at the time. So this is, if Dr. Flanagan and his administration's asking for it, they're needed.
Right. Yeah. Could I, I hate to bounce around, but I have one other question. On the athletic revenues, I see that you've budgeted less than in the prior year. Is that a reflection of COVID again? Is it because less kids participated and less, you know, receipts at the gate for various athletic events? And are we being too conservative?
I sort of hoped when I looked at the revenues from last year that it was a COVID blip, that perhaps that was something that, it was just attrition due to that. And again, that, you know, fiscal year, trying to look at the revenues for fiscal year twenty-one were obviously tough with sports being all over the board. But I did go back to a full year prior to that, and it seemed like the collections were down and participation was down. So it's probably something that as fiscal year twenty-three rolls out, I'll probably, you know, reach out to the athletic director and she and I will do a little deeper dive with what it's looking at, how it's projected out to this, and maybe how it's going to project forward as we, you know, with any luck, get a little closer to.
Is that a trend, is that a trend that's been happening over a period of years that's been coming down?
Over the last couple of years, yes. And you sort of have to throw out both this year and last year as, you know, due to pandemic-related, but it seemed like the year prior to that was having some issues as well.
And I'll just add high level on that. I mean, if you just think about what we used to have here for programs, we now co-op hockey. We used to be standalone hockey program. We co-op wrestling with other districts. We used to be standalone in that as well. So the fact that we're co-op boys lacrosse last year, so that we're cooperating these programs and participating with other towns is just indicative that our numbers are going down as a community.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider? You asked one of my questions, so that's good. So I brought up the point about really, my mind, you're only asking for another one-and-a-half positions or so, in my estimation. Let's see, there was another question here. What about the transportation part, four-point-one percent? Can you, that something was just, was already factored into our contract?
So, so yes, we're actually going to speak to that later in the agenda in terms of what the contract was looking like, but this current year was the last year, the last year of our current agreement, so we did go out to bid. We're currently paying three-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars per bus per day for this year, and fearing that we were going to have our competitive bid process sort of trickle down to one bid, which did happen. Our original number that we were throwing around in the budget subcommittee meetings were four-hundred-and-thirty dollars per day, that it was going to go up that much. Happy to report that when the one bid did come in, that DBUS was projecting out four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars per bus per day. So very happy that it didn't come in with a dire amount. I've heard, it's a struggle that all of the school districts in Massachusetts seem to have, that there isn't a lot of competitive bidding between bus companies. And one district out in Weston, Mass. had like, something like a twenty-nine percent increase on their bus cost in one year, which thankfully, we were not in that position, but.
Yeah, I just want to echo that point. This is something that we've talked about for several years, and certainly in my association with school superintendents. It's a problem that every district goes out to bid and we're all in receiving one bid. There's really no competitive nature to it. So it's certainly something we've expressed at our level, but we'd like to see more bids. It would certainly make it better for the district, but it's just, it's just not happening. I think they're just rolling over wherever they are, the bus companies. And that being said, we're very fortunate that we have an outstanding vendor in DBUS. They do a great job with us, they work with us, couldn't be happier with DBUS, so double-edged sword.
Exactly.
I think they did help out during COVID, too, didn't they?
Absolutely.
As I heard some of that goings on.
And they've actually helped out beyond COVID. There's been years in the past where a bid has come in significantly higher than where we planned in our budget, and our budget was locked, and we would go back to DBUS and ask them to try to sharpen their pencils a bit, and they would actually work with us and bring the number down to sort of help us. So, you know, absolutely, I'm upset that we only got one bid to a certain degree because DBUS has been in this district for, you know, very large amount of years, and they've been great to work with.
Right. I would say anecdotally also, you're seeing in the paper that, you know, bus companies are having trouble finding drivers. So it doesn't surprise me that there aren't multiple companies bidding because they're all stressed.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And it's an investment for a new company to come in.
Yeah.
You know, they have to lease buses, and, you know, if you're leasing a fleet of fifteen buses with only a three-year guarantee of business, you know, I can, you know, certainly understand some of their hesitance to come into a new district.
Has there been any talk about going to electric buses with the vendor?
That's been talked about from, you know, I'm not a fleet expert by any means in terms of buses. I've heard, you know, again, anecdotally, I've heard the bus, you know, bus company talk about, you know, how light the vehicle has to be and, you know, I don't think we're there yet. I think we're getting there. Hopefully, we'll get there down the road. Might not be while I'm here, but, you know, maybe beyond that, they'll start electric fleets, might be something out there.
That's another problem with the Russian Ukraine there. And rare, and rare minerals, and rare earths.
True.
We can have problems with that, bringing that forward as well.
Which is also an opportunity, because although you're locked in, the fuel costs are going up. I run a fleet, so, and with electric ones, because we make it here, possibly on the roof of the elementary school someday, kind of works out.
I do want to point out when we're talking about electricity, town, Massachusetts, our town association. I, I do want to point out when we're talking about electricity, town, Mass., our town association locked us in at 10.9%. You can purchase electricity through the town consortium. A lot of people may not know that. That's actually only 10.9 per kilowatt. I said percent, 10.9 per kilowatt for residents, if you want to join that. And I think National Grid is 14, over 14 cents a kilowatt. So maybe some people don't know that, but they locked us in, I think through 24 as well.
Yeah, I'm not 100% certain. I, I do know that.
I'm certain about the rate. How long, I'm not certain.
Right. I can tell you in terms of electricity, we're, we're currently at 9.8. And for that last year of the current contract, we're actually going to go down to 8.9 kilowatts. So, and, and as I mentioned, the solar panels are locked in at 9.8.
I, I don't want to be redundant, but on the same vein, talking about technology, as Mr. Schneider talked about that. Because we, I know the school, you did have an issue here a few years back, maybe a year, a couple of years back. What's your level of security, again, with the recent events that the Russians could be?
Yeah, so, so we, we upgraded to the highest level of protection you can have on your firewall server with DDoS protection through Comcast. We did that on this campus. The issue was here, I think it was last October, it might have been the October before that. But we had an issue here on this campus and it crippled our campus for, for four or five days. So we, we did address that here. And at that time, we made a decision that we're not going to waste time. We're going to the elementary school right away as well. So our schools are fully DDoS protected with the highest level of security firewall.
High, high level of certainty that we're good in this school. As high as we can be.
As much as I know about technology, we're there.
As much as we can be. And we don't want to give anybody that might be listening too much information to know how to get around it either, so.
No, I know our tech, our tech director stays up at night thinking about it, so.
Okay. The next thing, I'm just going through my thing here, a cover page expenses. That's a little different than you had listed in previous years. You actually listed them out, undistributed grant funding. You had a list of four or five things, but now you're calling that a cover page, which is fine. I, I understood what happened. But undercover page, it said capital projects funded from lease revenues. Is that number still going to be about $125,000 and then $75,000 to reduce the town share?
So.
Lakeview School.
Yes. So that's the Lakeview School lease. And that is capital money earmarked from the lease.
Right.
We've worked with Lake, with Valley Collaborative to get some of the funding, even though it's presenting in FY '23, to get some of that funding upfront for, in June of '22 and July of '22 to finish the window project this summer. So timing of it will sort of come off this budget, but it's still funding designed to be lease revenue for next year that we're actually getting paid upfront.
So you, you, Valley Collaborative, I'm looking at the number, is actually, you're, you're giving that, that's reducing the town share of the school budget by $75,000. What other money is there over and above the $75,000? That number, you don't have a number?
It's 125.
So that number stayed the same?
Yes.
As, as it was last year?
Yes. That, that number, Mr. Crawford, actually, the only number that really changed in those cover pages expenses are the undistributed grant fundings.
Okay.
You, you did see in the revenue that the grant number is coming up. But some of those, some of those grants are targeted for specific items that aren't built within our budget. So those are off, off budget spending that we need to capture in that undistributed figure. So that is actually the only figure that's going up of those cover page expenses.
And I had heard at previous meeting, the collaborative, that the Valley Collaborative is going to be doing some improvements to that school as well, right?
Yes, yes, significant improvements. 3.2 million over the past five years.
Lot of money, but so that seems like a good deal. All right, so that answered that question. Almost there, I think. On the revenue side, the page where it says the cannabis to be determined, what did the schools use the $65,000 for in fiscal year '22 of cannabis money? Was that one-time spending or was that going into the budget?
So that was actually pledged during a February tri-board last year with $55,000 of it earmarked to offset one of the health teachers' salaries and an additional $10,000 to Dr. Branco's curriculum cycle to focus on health curriculum.
Okay, so if, if the town should, it says to be determined, if the town, the Board of Selectmen really decide to go ahead and give you another $65,000, is that going to help you bring this down below the town share down?
Absolutely.
That's part of the, that's part of the calculus in that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay, I'm just, I figured that. The other thing is, but ARPA funding, that would not go toward bringing the budget down because that's probably going to be one-time spending.
That would be our intent.
Is, is that, is that correct?
Well, certainly we don't use, we, you don't want to use rev, uh, one-time funding to, to, to build the structure.
ARPA is one-time spending, you know, because you really have to spend it by, or have, at least have it allocated by December of 2024.
That being said, I also know that at the Capital Asset Committee, there's discussions about funding positions through ARPA as well. So I, I don't want to speak definitively on ARPA funding. I'm not, certainly not the expert on that. But I.
Well, again, the question would come up, sir, again, is if ARPA used some money to fund teachers, would that be just a one-time shot deal or would that, would that reduce the town share in the school budget?
So in the short term, we'll reduce the town share, but we have to figure out structurally how we assume that position moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there was, if I could, Dr. Flanagan, there, there was, if you look at that cares figure, a large amount of that figure, some $90,000 was used to have an extended summer programming due to the, due to the loss of some of the educational time due to the pandemic. We do envision that being, again, another summer of '22 issue. If, if ARPA funding was, you know, if there was $90,000 in ARPA to go towards that extended summer learning, might that be something that might, could drop off in FY '23? Again, Dr. Flanagan says it's not widgets we're, we're dealing with. We, you know, we, we sort of bend to the needs of the kids, the kids in front of us. And, you know, if, if we were to use ARPA funding for summer of '22 and it wasn't available for summer of '23 or summer of '24 and it was looking the same as what it's looked like last year and this year, again, we, you know, we move around and have to deal within our structure to see, you know, where do we go?
Sure.
And it's like that with tuitions, you know, we're in a, we're in a, an unusual spot where our current roster is bringing the tuition number down significantly. That's gone up significantly from one year to the next. And again, working within our structure, you know, we bring the FTEs down to, to get to a number because we know, you know, again, if, it's our kids, they're in the least restrictive environment, but if they need to be serviced outside of the district, it's our responsibility to age 22 to take care of these, you know, these kids of ours, so.
And I think that's part of the reason we started a special ed stabilization fund about four years ago to make sure we have some kind of rainy day fund to go to.
Looks like we don't have too much, that is a bigger problem this year.
No, not this year, nope.
Not right now.
As a member of the Capital Asset Committee, we have not discussed ARPA in any detail.
Exactly. I was going to say, the ARPA funding as well is, because things, they came out with a reg, regulation where if you're getting less than $10 million, they really made it almost, the Board of Selectmen, you can do it on a holistic approach. You know, they, they don't have to pigeonhole anything. It doesn't have to be for this particular thing or that particular thing. It's much the same as the way we've been working with the school committee and the town as opposed to what we used to be. It used to be your money and our money and now, now we know it's, it's everybody's money. It's everybody's town. It's everybody's school. You know, so the ARPA money really is the same thing because we had about, we have about 3.4 million left. But that, that money, we, we, we got 3.4 million because we said it was loss of revenue. It wasn't because we lost this, we lost that over there. It was just overall, the town lost that much economic activity. So that's how we came about it. So we have a lot more latitude to spend it. We don't have to pigeonhole it as much. So, so that part's good. The other part is the schools aren't the only one looking for the money.
Sure.
So anyway, that's all I have. Any other members? Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate. That was really brought clarity to everything.
Great. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From a school committee standpoint, I just want to open it up for discussion about the budget, if there are any discussion points or questions. We have.
Good job by Mr. Masina, as always. Thank you.
I didn't put anybody to sleep throwing numbers up. Always my fear.
I'll explain it to you.
You have to explain numbers to me.
Any, okay, we can move on to correspondence.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondence, Madam Chair, none as of tonight.
Great. And personnel, there is none for this evening as well. Share the success, Grace.
Okay. TES is celebrating the National Education Association's Read Across America, which is an annual reading motivation and awareness program that calls on every child in every community to celebrate reading with the theme of celebrating a nation of diverse readers. TES readers will enjoy a month filled with exciting literacy, community-based activities. The school registration is open on February 28th through March 4th. Registration packets can be dropped off in the vestibule in the lockbox. Kindergarten registration will be in person on Wednesday, March 2nd, and further details can be found on the website. At the middle school, grade level meetings were held to talk about respect and responsibility for the remainder of the year. And the student council is preparing for a March Madness week, which will include dress-up days, door decorating contests, dodgeball, basketball, and a school-wide coot competition. At the high school, seniors sign the Commitment to Graduate banner and grades nine through 11 will meet with Ms. Trainer to discuss the course selection for the upcoming school year. School counselor Ms. Gusterson is coordinating the Career Cafe, where sophomores and juniors that sign up will have the opportunity to meet with a THS alum about varying careers. And lastly, congratulations to the girls' basketball team on winning the Mid-Watch League Championship and to J.T. Schaefer for winning the Division II North Sectional, sort of North Sectional Wrestling Title. Good luck to all of our teams competing in the state tournament later this week.
Thanks, Grace. Item number seven, subcommittee updates. Are there any items to share at this time? I know Capital Assets kind of going on for a while.
Still going on.
Still going on, all right.
Every night.
We're actually in the process of reviewing, we had, I believe it's 19 items.
We're, we're going through the list of our requests that we have right now. We're each individually prioritizing what we believe based on a ranking system. And we should, we're supposed to have those in by Friday, right? So we, we should have a better idea. I think after our next meeting, I, I think next school committee meeting, we'd have a good update.
Excellent.
We have a tri-board meeting scheduled, not a tri-board, but a meeting with the FinCom.
FinCom.
On the 9th.
All right.
We'll present that to them as well.
Thank you. Just a reminder that, you know, we'll continue to visit the policy throughout the course of the year with the goal of wrapping up all the open policy sections by the end of the school year. All right, moving on.
Please.
Getting close.
Moving on to unfinished business, Dr. Flanagan, superintendent update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll jump right into the slide deck. So first update is on the middle school building project. We do have a, a community forum on March 16th. We have a school building committee meeting, a brief one before that, just to, I think, prove some invoices. But there will be a community forum on March 16th at Tingsboro Middle School beginning at 6:30 PM. I really hope people come out and can watch and participate and ask their questions. Town meeting, as we know, these are two critical dates, May 3rd. We need a two-thirds majority at town meeting to get the middle school project on the ballot. Two weeks later, we need a majority vote to get this information out there, so to, to get a successful project voted on. So one of the things that we've been really focusing on lately is really trying to get the word out there. And I'm very happy to say that our new communication and media director, Jackie Richardson, has done a phenomenal job, particularly with the social media aspect of it. One video that she created this past week had over 800 views, which I think is fantastic. Additionally, she does those renderings, like a before and after of what projected middle school can look like. The last one that she just put up had 2,200 people visit it. So the word is getting out there through social media. She's certainly doing everything she can. We're actually working, looking at contracting with Tomo Marketing Company on a wall to, to again, promote the message and get the word out there. Additionally, for everyone at home, see this beautiful flyer right here, all the committee has in front of them. This, the first thousand of these went out today. Every resident in Tingsboro will receive a copy of this brochure. It has two interactive QR codes that you can scan for additional information, for FAQ, for renderings. All the information you need will be mailed to your house this week. Fear not, you'll see another mailing in about another month with all the information you need. And probably yet again, at the end of April, you'll see another mailing come to your house. We will not accept that we didn't know there was a vote on the school. That's not going to fly. Jackie's done a great job promoting it. We're going to hit everyone at home where they live. And if you have been, seen the sandwich boards at any of the campuses with the new QR code, all the information is there. So I encourage people to, to be active, be informed, and know what, what's on, on the line here. We're talking about $28 million from the MSBA to come to this community. And if we say no, that $28 million is going to go to another community. It's our taxpayer money. It's our opportunity. So I hope people are informed. Our community and our kids absolutely deserve this project. So that's my speech on the TMS Building Project. Go to the next slide, Dr. Branco. Again, folks, this is just point of information, vaccination rates in the school, they continue to tick up. Not sure how important this information is anymore, given the mandate, given the relief of the mask mandate as well as on buses. So this is just a point of information. This slide may disappear. This may come out of our conversation moving forward, but I wanted to include it and give you notice that it's probably going to disappear moving forward. Go to the next one. I did not receive any feedback from the committee regarding Policy Section I. So that being said, Madam Chair, I would seek a request to see if we can approve that as a second read tonight and get that on the webpage.
So I'll seek a motion to approve as a second read, Section I of the Model MASC Policy Manual.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries 600.
Dr. Branco, we'll keep going right through the budget. We did all the budget. Go right to 9A. So, Madam Chair, we have a guest in the audience tonight. He's relatively familiar to a lot of you, I hope. Mike, if you want to come up to the table, that would be, that would be great. I just want to talk to the committee about the Assistant Superintendent search process that we went through over the past month or so. As we all know, Dr. Branco's done a phenomenal job the past six years. He's off to a bigger and better, the big seed at Rockport. So we needed to find a, a quality replacement for him. So we posted the job on January 21st. In the first three weeks of that posting, we received 24 certified applicants for the position. After the initial screening, we decided five of them potentially were a good fit for Tingsboro. So we bought five candidates in to be interviewed. The first interview committee was made up of three central office personnel, three administrators, and three unit A members. That committee interviewed all five candidates and unanimously narrowed it down to two. So we invited those two candidates to come back for a second interview. That committee was made up of six central office personnel as well as Chair Stanton. And I think coming out of that, there was a, a strong recommendation from all committee members that we nominate Mr. Michael Woodlock to be the next Assistant Superintendent of Tingsboro Public Schools. It's an interesting, it's an interesting position in that I'm, I'm making the recommendation to you. So I'm technically not hiring. I'm making recommendation for the committee to take action and vote to support Mike Woodlock as the next Assistant Superintendent. So to make that vote and be informed about that vote, his paperwork is in the drive, but I thought it was important for, for Mike to come here tonight and tell you a little bit about himself and, and why Tingsboro. And I think, hopefully, the committee will see that, or will be as impressed as, as both interview committees were with him at that time. So if it's all right, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Woodlock to say a few words.
Thank you. So happy to be here this evening. I left Tingsboro as principal at the high school six years ago. And it was a really difficult decision for me to go somewhere, somewhere else. I'd been in Tingsboro for 17 years prior to that. Since then, I've been the principal at Groton Don't School Regional High School and I've had lots of. had lots of amazing opportunities to kind of advance my, my knowledge, my content, and to be really immersed in a, a different situation, different than Tingsboro, which really led to a lot of opportunities for me to expand my capabilities. Interesting note, just since we're, we're here tonight, my first educational job in Massachusetts, my first teaching job I started in Florida, my first educational job in Massachusetts, I worked at McCarthy Middle School as supervisor of students, and they put me in an office right next to the band room. Not the best office in the school, but the, the irony here is that the band director at the time was on Mr. Mark Branko, so I did that job for one year, and to, to actually be here replacing Mr. Dr. Branko now is really kind of amazing, and I want to thank Dr. Branko because everything that I've seen and heard and questions that I've asked, there seems to be a really strong base here, especially with the curriculum mapping and everything that puts me in a really great spot to step in and I think, you know, hit the ground running. So, but a little bit more about my experience in Groton Dunstable, some of the things that I've been tasked with doing immediately there for the, you know, the past five and a half years reflect directly with a lot of the information that I've read and the questions I've since asked Dr. Flanagan about, you know, the, the strategic district plan and what is expected to go forward here in Tingsboro in the coming years. A lot of the things that are expected to be happening here are things that I've had direct experience with in the last five and a half years at Groton, in trying to implement more inclusive practices throughout our school, but also working with other members of the district as well. Additionally, I've had the real distinct opportunity to learn from one of, you know, really a world-renowned educator in Dr. Katie Novak, who I've recently published a book with, so it's available on Amazon and Cash Publishing. Just kidding. But, working with her and really being trained in a lot of these practices has given me other opportunities to do some consulting outside of my normal work schedule, and working with communities here in Massachusetts, but also communities throughout the country and in Canada, and have really provided me with opportunities to meet with other experts and even gain more understanding and make more connections for, you know, some of the similar things that we're going through here in Massachusetts, so. It just seems like the perfect place for me, and I'm so excited to be able, and hopefully with your approval, to come back to Tingsboro, to a community that I truly love, that, again, I worked in for seventeen years. I feel like my kids grew up in this library, in this building. It really is home to me professionally, and I really couldn't be more excited.
Do any of the members of the committee have any questions for Mr. Woodlock? No? I'd just like to share in brief, when we met with the two candidates, both candidates, we asked the same questions, so, about the same, it was the same subject matter that we were discussing, it was the same judgment criteria, and Mr. Woodlock, you know, you had great competition that you were competing against, but, you know, you came out, for me, you came out above and beyond. You, you feel like the right fit for the town, and you know the folks that you're going to be working with, and yet you still decide to come back for more, so.
Shot from the chair.
It's, it speaks a lot to the teams that we have here, that you, you know you can work with these people, they know they can work with you, but you're not coming back the same person. You know, you, you've done so much since you've left Tingsboro, and you're coming back with another perspective, some of the curriculum models that you've worked on, I'm really excited to see what you can bring to Tingsboro.
Thank you, I couldn't be more excited to, I know that, I know things change in six years, right? So I know there are a number of new faces, I know, you know, things aren't static here as well, a lot of things have changed here that I'll need to adjust to. But to your point, with the leadership in the buildings, you know, Mr. Pollitt was coming in right when I was leaving, but we were on the, we were on the selection committee for him, and I've had a chance to meet with him on a number of occasions, but I've worked with all of the administrators in these buildings personally before, and really excited to use those relationships that we've already established to get to work on the things that need to get done, and I know we can work really well together, I'm so confident in that, so. Whatever the barriers, whatever comes at us, I know I have people that I'll be working with that we can get the job done.
Great, so with that, I'll seek a motion. Sorry, I lost my place. I'll seek a motion to appoint Mr. Woodlock as the Assistant Superintendent of the Tingsboro Schools, effective July 1st, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries six zero zero. Congratulations, Mr. Woodlock.
Welcome back to Tingsboro.
Yes.
Appreciate it. I'll go back to my interview, if I can just say, make one final statement, when I interviewed for a social studies position here in 1997, I sat across the desk from Larry Kelleher, and Larry Kelleher looked me dead in the eye, and he said, you know, a lot of people could teach social studies, but not a lot of people could teach social studies in Tingsboro. He was looking for a certain person and the right fit for this community. Mark served that role, he was the right fit for six years, Mark's going off to bigger and better, Mike is the right fit for this community, and he's not going to use this to, to jump to the next position next year or the year after. I think we've got a long-term solution here, so that's what I'll say about that.
Moving on to nine B, regular ed transportation contracts.
Mr. Messina, we've talked a lot about buses tonight.
Seems like I took my own thunder already on this, but as I mentioned earlier, we, we did, we did go out to bid, we did get the one bid. Before you tonight is the recommendation to keep DBUS and award the bid to DBUS for the fiscal year '23 through fiscal '25 at the rates stated, as well as an available two option years at those rates stated as well. Also in this is the figures for the athletic events and field trips, as well as the late bus pricing. But I do recommend the school committee to award this bid, and would ask in the motion if we could authorize the chair to sign the contract.
So I'll seek a motion to enter into the agreement with DBUS Services of Shirley, Mass. for the regular ed transportation services for the three-year period of fiscal '23 to fiscal '25 with the two-year option, and to authorize me, the chair, to sign the contract.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question, Madam Chair, will it be a second contract for the specialized transportation?
So, specialized transportation is not subject to a 30B restriction where we have to go out to bid on a regular basis. We've been locked in with the rates with DBUS for a number of years, this is probably about the fifth or sixth year since we've been locked in. DBUS has not come back to us for any sort of increase, so we're, we've been happy with their service and the quoted price, so we have not gone out to seek additional quotes at this time.
Thank you.
Any other discussion points? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries six zero zero. Sign that contract, Mr. Messina.
I have it there for you, for your signature.
Very good.
Thank you.
And I think this is another Mr. Messina subject, is the substitute pay rates.
My name. So, at our last meeting, the school committee did take the budget subcommittee's recommendation to increase substitute rates for the next school year, and we had quite a bit of discussion about if we could apply the increase to the balance of fiscal year '22. Did do a rudimentary research and analysis of our current position on the budget, which I sent out to the school committee after our meeting last time, and I, I do think in review of your current budget, that the recommendation to increase the rates effective yesterday, February 28th, could be done if that's the will of the committee.
That would be my will.
Okay.
If it's Tony's will, it's my will.
All right. Rob, you look like you want to say something, no?
No, I, I, well, all right, I will, since you said something about it. No, it's, I, I think this is the right thing to do, considering we're still having, it's still a challenge to get subs in here. I, I know the ones that we have right now are working very hard, I know it's, teachers are working very hard to cover other teachers' classes, we need to minimize that, so, yes, definitely.
All right, so I'll seek a motion to increase the fiscal '22 substitute, substitute pay rates to the recently approved fiscal '23 rates, effective yesterday, February 28th, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries six zero zero.
Thank you.
And then moving on to the face covering policy amendments.
So Madam Chair, as we've noticed over the past three years, things are fluid, and when we make decisions, DESI changes, CDC changes, we shift back and forth, and we try to stay ahead of it. So, the face covering policy that was approved by this committee on the 15th, in my absence, clearly articulated that masks would be required on school buses, given the recommendation by the CDC to repeal that recommendation and leave it up to the locals, I used Policy C that, that allows me to make a decision in absence of policy, so I did that on Sunday because I know that there was a lot of talk in the community that, and it was a trend, that, that people were pulling face masks off on buses, why shouldn't we, we should. So we did. At that point, we, we made that decision, communication went out Sunday afternoon. Knowing that we had this committee meeting tonight, the committee can certainly reverse that decision and/or continue to support that decision, if the committee so desires to support that position, I would strongly suggest we amend the policy and strike the language that says masks are going to be required on buses. So that's where we are in, in a nutshell, I guess, right?
Yep.
All right.
Can I loudly make that motion to amend the policy?
All right, is there a second? Great, any discussion?
Just a point of clarification, it would simply be strike through that line and pull out the, the face mask on buses. They're still required in the health office because that's a, a forward-facing.
Yep, medical.
Medical facility.
And there's one other, they're required based off of positive COVID.
Day six to 10 right now, coming back, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, yep.
Does the updated guidance have mentioned anything about the windows being open?
So, it does and it doesn't, we talked to Sandra today, Mr. Messina and I had her on speakerphone, Joe, you have a follow-up on that, you received an email?
Yeah, she, she did reach out to, Sandra Martin at DBUS reached out to her contact at DESI, and late this afternoon, she did share DESI's response in their, their, their FAQ in terms of transportation, it's still their recommendation to keep the windows open where feasible, if DBUS continues to follow that recommendation. It's not a mandate, but again, I think through, throughout all of this, we've tried to, we've tried to focus on the safety and well-being of the students and follow any of the recommendations or advisories that come forward. So DESI is still recommending it, and that's what DBUS is basing it upon.
Do we have the authority to override DBUS's decision? So if we vote, we want the windows closed, does DBUS have to follow that?
It's, it's, it's a, it's a good question, we can certainly look into it, you know, I was hoping we'd get a more definitive answer today. Again, I think we could locally make that determination if that was the will of the committee, based on the advisory that's coming from DESI isn't a mandate, it's an advisory and guidance, that's all it is. This isn't the CDC mandating this or DESI mandating that, so it's a recommendation more than anything. So, I, I believe we could say if, you know, if the temperature got under ten degrees or hits single digits, then the, the, only one window will be open or something, we can certainly have conversations, you know, I, I believe that we're three weeks away from that not, this not being an issue, three or four weeks away, but in the, in the short term, if we wanted to come up with some kind of rule of thumb, we could certainly do that, or we could have the informal conversation with DBUS if you'd like us to do that as well.
Yeah, I mean, it was four degrees and my daughter got on the bus this morning, I think with the masks coming off everywhere, I think keeping the window shut makes more sense at this point, especially while we're still getting single-digit days in the morning. So if it's a recommendation, I would like to bring it to the committee to take a vote on it. I know that has to happen after we conclude this vote, but.
Can we conclude this vote first?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Yep. Is there any further discussion on the motion to amend the school committee policy on masks as presented by Dr. Flanagan? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries six zero zero. So, Ryan, back to your discussion, can you restate your motion?
I would like to make a motion that, I guess I don't know how to word, that the windows on DBUSs are no longer required to be open.
I, I don't respect, but I would like to know whether it's our decision or DBUS's decision.
So we're not going to.
The mandate's actually, or the advisory is actually going to DBUS, not Tingsboro Public Schools.
So in that respect.
Am I correct in saying that?
You are incorrect in saying that, and there's no language in the contract which specifically says, we, you know, so we do have a contract with DBUS, we'd have to explore what that means.
So can we qualify the motion that if DBUS is willing, that's the will of the committee?
I, I would agree with you, if, I, I think that we look to take the vote tonight qualified.
Right.
And knowing that it may not be within our power to make that decision, it may be the requirement that DBUS makes that decision, but I wouldn't want to wait two more weeks.
Exactly, and if it's a case that it's DBUS's decision, at least I know that we did what we could.
So, Madam Chair, if I could, I could also certainly draft communication to DBUS detailing the conversation that happened tonight and the, the will and desire of this committee based upon a vote, and provide it to them and get some feedback from them, if that's what we want to go.
I think that's fair.
So I'll second your motion, but can you restate it qualified? Sorry, I'm asking you to restate over and over here.
That's fine.
And do you want to do temperature, or are you just going to do?
I don't, no, I don't.
You're just going to do.
Well, it's a committee discussion.
Right. Yeah, so the motion I'm making is for there to be no requirement to have the windows open on the buses, assuming DBUS is willing to agree to that.
And I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
Any, any discussion?
Oh, yeah.
I, I think one thing I just would like to have added to that, if possible, is to have not necessarily a definitive temperature or anything like that, but to really kind of qualify inclement weather. I know, you know, we've had windows open, you know, through snow, through rain, sleet, what have you, whether or not it's getting, truly getting into the bus or not, I, I'm not on the bus, so I can't say. But I, I feel like if we're going to make, you know, the qualified motion, we should have some sort of a guideline around it, so, you know, it, it doesn't become a, we made a, a motion that really can't go anywhere.
Why can't it go anywhere?
Well, if we say that, you know, we'd like it to be closed, but.
No, so it's, the motion isn't for the windows to be closed, it's for them not to be required to be open. So basically returning to pre-COVID regulations.
So if they want to.
If they want to open it, they open it, if they don't, they don't. And to your point, the weather is getting on the bus. When we had that snowstorm, my daughter sent me a picture of a snow pile on her seat, so the weather does get in with the windows open, yeah.
But I almost feel like it should be, there should be something about the temperature because, because even if we make this motion, they can decide, they can say, well, we still want them, I want, as a bus driver, I want mine open, and it's ten degrees out.
But they could have done, made that decision before, too, so if you rewind to 2019, before any of this happened, they could have made that decision then, too.
Yeah, but they wouldn't, back then.
Madam Chair, I would just advise that we also be careful that we don't put parameters on bus drivers that we don't put on classroom teachers. So we ask, by keeping it high-level and open-ended, we're, we're asking them to use a discretion, the professional discretion, which I think is what we do with our classroom teachers.
Correct.
So by putting out a threshold number, now we're putting those bus drivers in a box, and we don't do that with our classroom teachers, so I, I actually support the, the open language, I think that's better. And again, as we, as we've learned throughout this whole year, policy is high-level overarching, and the practice will be left up to the professionals at the.
You know, and the other thing to remember, too, is, you know, our kids are on the bus for twenty, thirty, forty minutes in the morning, but we have athletes. for 20, 30, 40 minutes in the morning, but we have athletes that take long bus drives, and I know a lot of those athletes have complained, you know, they're on the bus for an hour, an hour and a half, you know, one way, and it's freezing out and they're cold, so there's that aspect to consider also.
And Rob's been patiently waiting, Rob, I want to give you some time.
Actually, your last statement kind of made me rethink my motion, or, I'm sorry, my ideas, or my opinions. I guess, yeah, when we think about it just as a school day, these kids have been doing this for the past couple of years, they're used to it, of course, there are complaints about it, but to Dr. Flanagan's point, we're only a few weeks away from having consistently warmer weather. We're just taking the mask mandate off. Granted, it's inside our school buildings where we have better ventilation, we have equipment in place in each classroom that mitigates any, that helps to mitigate the risk of transmission, and there are much fewer kids within each classroom. Within a bus, it's a much more confined area. By closing the windows without any other way of refreshing the air within the, in that area, my, my concern is, is that we are making it riskier for these kids. On an athlete's bus, well, I'll say that definitely they do spend a considerable amount of more time on the bus, on the away games. There are fewer students on the bus, which helps to reduce that risk. I just still have a lot of concern, as I did two weeks ago when we met, when we voted to remove the mask mandate, that we're doing this very, we're doing a lot at once, without seeing the results of any of our other decisions. I'm still very concerned about the possibility of our numbers increasing with the mask mandate being removed. I, I want to see, let's, let's see what happens without the mask mandate, then we can take a look at the windows on the bus. But then again, as we said, a couple of weeks from now, we should have better weather, and we may not have to look at that. Those are just my concerns with this. I think we're just, I think us, like a lot of communities, we're just throwing all of these restrictions out the door very quickly, just because we're in a rush to get back to normal, and I still have a lot of concerns about the health of our kids. I'm not saying you don't, I'm, just, just my opinion.
Julie, did you have something you want to say? Yeah, I just have a question about the, the schools. Are we keeping windows open in the schools now, or because of?
For the most part, we try to keep the schools, windows open in the middle school, yes.
We are.
That's where the ventilation issues are, we have hypofilters in the room there. Elementary school, the HVAC is fine, the high school HVAC is acceptable. Interior classrooms here, we try to have hypofilters, but on a regular basis, the teachers at the middle school try to keep the windows open.
They're wearing coats in those classrooms?
So, no, we're closing it over a little bit at this point, you know, we're also at the point to that, to Ross's point, you know, it's not, it's not 14 months ago, the kids that wanted to have vaccine, had the vaccine, you know, we're in a different spot, the teachers are better protected, most of them vaccinated, you see the numbers here. So, so, I mean, I hear both sides of the earth, there's no good answer here.
Yeah, yeah.
The committee just kind of needs to make a decision on what you want to do, we'll act accordingly.
I mean, my concern when, with the comments around, we have, you know, two or three more weeks, hopefully only two, of the tough weather, it's still two or three more weeks of the tough weather, it's starting these kids off freezing cold, and, I mean, if they're going to the middle school, they're probably freezing cold all day anyway. It's, it's a tough start to the day, we could have some bad weather, they've already gone through this bad weather. It's not saying that the windows can't be open, it's saying that they're not required to be open, and so obviously with the qualifier, that DBUS has to be, we have to have the jurisdiction to make that decision, right?
Absolutely, and, sorry, go.
No, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, you know, the weather may get a little bit warmer in a few weeks, but it doesn't mean it's going to stop raining, rain, rain will still come in the open windows regardless of the temperature.
Yep. And now they're starting their day wet.
Right.
Is there any?
We don't have single kids on bus seats anymore, we don't do the, you know, there are kids doubled up, so our kids force to sit next to windows who are getting wet.
And masks are still optional, so, you know, students can choose to wear masks on the bus, so they are optional, and, I mean, the windows, to a degree, by saying they're not required to be open, they're optional to be opened. Any further discussion? So, all those in favor of the motion for the windows not to be required to be opened, qualified that DBUS, that we have the jurisdiction to make that decision?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye, no, whatever that's.
Abstained? Zero, so that carries 5-1-0.
I will follow up on that and get back to you.
Sure, very good, thank you, Dr. Flanagan.
Thank you.
Moving on to finance. Mr. Messina, again.
Big night indeed. Thank you, Madam Chair. In your drive is the list of the eight bill warrants presented to the school committee tonight, list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts in there. Signing of payroll, in your drive as well are the last two pay dates, the payroll of February 14th and February 28th, and those warrant numbers and amounts are in there as well. And that is it for finance.
School committee discussion, Grace?
I'm all set, thank you.
Rob?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Dr. Branko?
Just want to welcome Mr. Woodlock back to Tingsboro, bittersweet when you move on from a place that you've called home for six years, but I told Dr. Flanagan, really excited that it's someone that I know so well professionally and personally, and so excited to help him transition.
Mr. Messina?
Not that I haven't said enough tonight, but I certainly echo Dr. Branko welcoming Mr. Woodlock back into the district. Dr. Branko, your time will come when I'll have something to say about you, but.
Something to throw.
It is a threat. I did have the pleasure of interviewing both of the finalists, one of the things that I pointed out to the committee after we met them both is, we generally get candidates come to us at their best, and we've had a few strikeouts, Dr. Flanagan can attest to, what we thought we were getting isn't necessarily what we always get. I am 100% comfortable with Mike Woodlock being the Assistant Superintendent, because I've worked with him, we've worked side by side for a number of years, and, you know, what we saw here tonight, what we saw in that finalist interview, is Mr. Woodlock, and I do look forward to him coming back to the district.
Coming?
Welcome back, Mr. Woodlock. I've worked with him over the years, my kids have had experiences in high school and stuff like that, so, welcome back. That is it, and it's nice to sit here without a mask, I just want to say.
I've been smiling a lot more looking at your face, Tony, it's, it's been a pleasure. Mr. Woodlock, I don't know you, I met you tonight for the first time, but I've heard nothing but good things since your name came up, I'm really looking forward to working with you. You know, I'm going to test you on your Excel skills at some point.
It's got to be better than me.
That was one area Mark was lacking, but I'll work with you on it. That's all I have.
Similar, welcome back into the fold, Mr. Woodlock. You know, I hope Dr. Flanagan will let you know the new superintendent office is going to be next to the bandroom in the new school. No, just, only other thing, just a reminder to everyone, I know we're still in our first couple of weeks of, our first week really, first two days of, you know, masks being optional, and I think I've heard, you know, a lot of positives coming from, you know, from my kids coming, coming home and feeling comfortable in the schools, and just wanted to reiterate, just keeping, keeping up the positivity, whether someone's choosing to wear a mask or not, just, you know, making sure that everyone's feeling comfortable and, you know, there's no concerns about teasing or anything like that, whether they are wearing or not wearing, so.
Awesome. And I have to say, I'm a fan from yours way back, ever since the day when you helped my daughter jump her car, that battery's died. I think it was you, I don't know, but welcome back.
Dr. Flanagan?
Yes, Woody, welcome back, that's great. I would like to recognize the finance committee and thank them for coming out tonight, they came with, with great questions, they were informed, they understood, and I appreciate the fact that they, they recognize our budget history over the past six years, and know, and I think that Chair Crawford mentioned it a couple of times tonight, that this group, this committee has been fiscally responsible in developing this budget, and that we don't take staffing or make staffing decisions lightly, so I thank them for, for being informed, and that's it.
Right, you stole my thunder a little bit there.
Oh, sorry.
I was going to also thank the finance committee, Mr. Posersky, Mr. Schneider, and Mr. Crawford for coming tonight, and also, you know, for finance people, they look at it as dollars and cents, and I appreciate that they looked at this as children, and the needs of our children, and understanding that we're trying to meet the needs of our children within this budget. It was a great discussion, they had great questions, and I appreciate the partnership that we have with the finance committee and the board of selectmen, and, Mr. Woodlock, welcome home. With that, we do have a need for executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than the professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaint, or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. We'll return from executive session only to adjourn the regularly session meeting, and with that, we will need a roll call vote. I'm seeking that motion.
We have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Sounds like it.
Right. Mr. Mullin?
In favor?
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
In favor?
In favor.